Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 15th, 2024 meeting of the Douglas Board of Selectmen. Please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening, everyone. To remind everyone that we're being taped and broadcast live via Douglas Cable. Thank you for that. For chairman's announcements, I would just give a shout out to the town common folk who put on a wonderful event this weekend in respect to their scarecrow competition. It was a lovely little hour of my day on Saturday with my daughter. A lot of creative people out there, and kudos to the community. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to something that's currently not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move right on to item number five, is an appointment of Michael Hutnak, as part of the financial committee, to the MS4 Stakeholder Committee. An appointment. Mike's been a longtime volunteer in town.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mike Hutnak to the MS4 Stakeholder Committee.
Motion's been made by Les, seconded by Ross. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. We'll go 4-0 on that, and Hal, you can say good evening. How are you? We just got started.
Sorry, I moved a bit late.
That's all right.
Was it going to vote? I didn't know, but you were seceding from the union or something?
No, we can't do that much damage in two minutes. But I can bring Adam up. Come on up, Adam.
This could be damage. I don't really want to be here to talk about snow and ice, but I am.
It's coming.
It is, unfortunately. So our annual update for the 2024-2025 winter, I'm just going to run through some of the things. In total, we have 20 subcontractors that work alongside with our seven highway employees. All have committed to return, and that's a credit to you guys for keeping the pay rates up and matching mass DOT rates, and Matt, in helping us with the insurance requirements at a minimum. A lot of towns are struggling. Unfortunately, the last few years, we haven't had the struggle. Our guys are willing to come back. You guys have been great keeping the rates up. We'll go over the new rates for an approval later on. Again, sanding, we have six highway trucks and two subcontractors on the road at all times. And sidewalk plowing, as in the past, once we get things completed on the streets, the next day, we address the sidewalks. If we can't right away, the next day, we'll do it. And one of the things I just wanted to bring up while I'm on camera is the Douglas Bylaw, Section 2, sidewalk ice and snow removal. And the bylaw states that the owner or occupant of any premises abutting on a public way of the town on which there is a public sidewalk shall, as soon as reasonably possible, so dispose or treat ice and snow accumulating thereon as to make said sidewalk reasonably available and safe for public passage. Now, we do help the public out. You know, this is basically anyone who owns a house on a property abutting a sidewalk is responsible to clear it. We do a lot of it, but, you know, any help is appreciated. Sometimes we can't get there till the next day, and I know the school department, you know, frowns on us a little bit because of it, but we try to do our best. So that is in there, and it's actually, the other thing that's on here is to throw, please do not throw or place any snow or ice in the public way of the town in such a quantity or condition to obstruct public passage or of said way. And that's because people plow across the road every year, and we have to constantly get on them. This is enforced by the police officers and the building commissioner. They're responsible for enforcement of both, but just wanted to bring it up. And the mailbox personnel, personal property policy, this policy's been in place also, I believe, since 1995. It shall be the policy of the town of Douglas that any damage done to personal property, such as mailboxes, fences, et cetera, located on the town property will not be replaced at the town's expense, but will be the responsibility of the personal property owner unless the owner has an easement for the placement of said personal property. And the reason I bring this up, last year, to the credit of one of our subcontractors, he ended up hooking a basketball hoop that was still left on the edge of the roadway, and he damaged it. And he did replace it, he paid for it, but technically, he shouldn't have had to. But I just wanted to bring that up, because we have several around town, and people expect us to, you know, they leave it out there year-round, and our trucks go by, and it just catches on one of the handles or something, and then it tears it down, and they want us to give them a new one. So while I was here, I figured I'd bring this up. Salt bids, so the state, we're not part of the state, but the state bid this year came in at $73 a ton, which is a $5 increase. We are part of the nine-town bid through Shrewsbury, and ours went down $4.69 for the 70%, and down $3.07 for the 30%. So we've actually saved money compared to the state, which is great. This is probably the third year in a row that Shrewsbury bid has, you know, gotten us a better deal than what the state's getting. Plus, not going with the state, we end up being the little man in the group, you know, like, they're not looking at Douglas, they're looking at all the state, state bonds first, and then they try to get to you after. So this way, with this little nine-town group that we've got, they've been saving us money, and we get great service.
You mean to tell me our roads are treated on the same roads as Shrewsbury?
Shrewsbury, same bid, yeah, everything.
And our taxes are infinitely...
You can say it if you want.
No, I've always thought people in Douglas are smart.
Yeah. So the current rates that we have from last year, I'll go over them. So the 3/4 ton with an 8-foot plow was $90 an hour. It goes up to 95 if you approve it. The 1 ton with a 9-foot plow went from 103 to 112. The 1 ton with a 9-foot plow and a 3-yard sander goes from 120 to 125. A skid steer goes from 90 to 118. A backhoe with a 12-foot pusher goes from 123 to 129. And a 6-wheel dump truck with a 10-foot plow and a 6-yard sander goes from 158 to 166. Again, that is with a 4-hour minimum when they're called out for us. So that's what I'm recommending to you tonight, is if you could approve the proposed rates that I just went over, so that way, we continue to keep at mass DOT rates. And, you know, like I said, we have a great group of subcontractors, and they're all willing to come back. They haven't signed yet, but I'm sure, once we have this and we get the contracts out, they'll all sign. I wait for these rates from you folks before we can move forward.
Any questions for Adam? There is a little bit of a market difference in the increase from the skid steer from last year to this year?
So the skid steer's actually a two-year increase. We didn't increase it last year.
Okay.
So that's what the jump is.
Entertainer motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the plow rate increase for the 2024-2025 season.
Motion's been made by Ross.
Second the motion.
Seconded by Les. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Adam. We have five minutes to go before our public hearing. I wonder if we could take over number eight, the, sign the presidential state election Exercise we do each and every election.
Referendum questions, boy, are too detailed.
Have any issues with...
Move we approve the warrant for the annual state election?
It's for me. Motion's been made by Hal.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Les. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Is it unanimous? Yeah, let's bring out some minutes. Guys a shot, and I make a motion, anyone?
I'll abstain, I wasn't...
Oh, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the September 17th minutes for 2024. Second.
Motion's been made by Les, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstain?
Abstain, yeah. I was not here. In spirit, I was.
Yeah, I know you were.
Right.
Yeah, it was...
You even had ice cream for you.
It was my birthday.
Happy belated, if I hadn't got you before. If there's ever a reason to Mr. Selectmen's meeting, it might be birth.
Or anniversary.
Yeah, anniversary, wife's birthday.
Put that pretty high.
I mean, you had business travel, there's a whole bunch of reasons. We do have a few minutes, though. Are you guys here for the public hearing at 7:15?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be a long two-minute.
The longest. Should've brought some popcorn.
Maybe you can take a minute to look through the warrant. Try to find any questions.
Happy birthday, Adam. Thank you.
Everybody visit the scarecrows at the town common?
Yeah, I did.
I thought it was a general group of people together, if you go by quickly.
Yes. You wouldn't, if you didn't know of scarecrows, you'd kind of get taken by surprise.
I think they had about 50 entries.
Yeah, it's pretty full up there.
Yeah.
Probably slows traffic down, I would think. Right? If you see... But creative, huh?
Very creative.
Yeah, lots happen in October, right? We had the Oktoberfest, went very well.
Gene, would you agree that clock says 7:15?
Snoopy does.
All right, Snoopy, that's all we're doing. Snoop is in the house, and we were going to call to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing. At 7:15, made by Mike. Seconded by Ross. All those in favor? Aye. Before us is a discussion on Whitten Heights' street layout and the consideration of acceptance for future thinking, but we're talking about this in regards to the annual town meeting. Matt, you want to come forward?
Sure.
We have some remote people. Good evening.
Good evening.
Paint a picture for us, Matt, and we'll go from there.
Sure.
Please.
So Whitten Heights subdivision has received its top course. It has now sit for an entire winter, and there were some outstanding items that needed to be addressed, including paying taxes and some other items that still need to be done, but in order to get on the warrant, they had to submit all the draft documents by October 1st, right? So they submitted everything, they gave us almost everything except for the review by council, which is normal. But there's still some punch list items on the list that still need to be addressed. Some of these items can be done prior to town meeting, including maintenance, but some of them are structural and need to be addressed kind of right away. And the engineer is on Zoom, and if he wants to talk about some of these things as well, but one of them was the height of the stop sign at the entrance, does not meet the minimum height. Details in the, not a throughway sign, also not at the right height. There's also five catch basin grates that need to be met to the specs for the approved plan. They're basin grates installed with square holes and not cascade type. I don't know what that means. Grate should be...
May I ask, Matt?
Yeah. Grate should be replaced prior to town excepting the road. 11 concrete bounds that have not been installed yet, those should be installed prior to town excepting the road. There's also a lot of vegetation behind the sidewalk to the left, and the curbing to the right, that needs to be maintained prior to town excepting the road. Curbing's not cracked. The highway superintendent did take a look at those, he said they were in decent shape. He didn't have any issues or concerns about those, so that was good. The sediment for bay had a bunch of vegetation, including kind of trees growing up out of the riprap and out of the spillway and stuff. Those need to be removed. There's also a 12-foot wide gravel access road that needs to be installed around the sediment for bay and the basin spillway, as well as easement access to the private property to the north that has yet to be installed. That also needs to be done. There's also a painted crosswalk at Douglas Hill Way between the handicap ramps that's not been installed yet as well. From what I understand, the engineer is working on a plan to get this stuff done, I believe, soon, if not this week, if I'm not mistaken. Through the chair to you, to the engineer.
For the record, my name is Jude Goff, and I work with OHI Engineering, and I represent Bob Pace, who has constructed Whitten Heights. We dig saved it this week, and we are planning on mobilizing late next week, and we're going to go out, and we're going to cut back all the brush along the left and right side as you get into the subdivision until you get to the first houses. It's kind of been overgrown through a couple of years of lack of maintenance. The basins were mucked out and were cleaned at one point, but given it sat for a period of about two years, and we've watched, we've watched the spillwater go in and out of it, and the basins work very well. They've just got, they need to be maintained, and the decision was made to wait until most of the leaves fall down off the trees before we go in and we start with machinery and ripping out, you know, these 2-inch saplings that have grown up out of the embankment, and then we can clearcut it, and then we can install that in 12-inch gravel access way. At that point, also, while we have machines there, I'm having bounds delivered so we can install the bounds to update the plan of record for the roadway. So that will be forthcoming once those are installed. And we also have a contractor lined up to paint the crosswalk and the sidewalk. The cascade grates that Matt mentioned, those have already been swalloped out. We swapped out the square grates with cascade directional grates, so that has been met, and within, you know, two weeks to four weeks, we should have that punch list wrapped up.
Mr. Chairman, there are two additional things. One item that we brought up after these plans were submitted was there was a lot line issue between number four and five, where an A&R was submitted to change the lot line. That needs to be reflected on these plans as well. I made the engineer aware of that and gave him the copies of the A&R that needs to add to the lot layout plan. One additional thing, in addition to the draft deeds for the basin and the open space, there's also a draft deed for 1 acre of land that's supposed to be transferred to Mr. Roy Swenson as a condition of the plant. He's here this evening, I'm sure he can talk about it. That draft deed is under review by council and is set to be transferred. It could be done prior to town meeting at any time, but I figured council should review it, since it's a condition of approval.
I was told by Mr. Pace on the phone a full call tonight that as soon as town council approves those draft deeds, you will have them recorded, and you will transfer the land both over to the town, the two open space parcels, and you will transfer the land over to Mr. Swenson.
So can't do that till we accept the road, but he could do the Swenson piece whenever he wants, but the rest of them, we have to wait for town meeting.
There was a question on the taxes, and that's still lingering, or that's been paid?
Those are paid in full as of Friday.
Let's go back in front of the planning board for a final look at before the annual company.
It could, absolutely.
Well, anything could.
Yeah, yeah.
It does it?
Typically, usually, these items are reviewed by a town engineer or the consultant of record, or myself. I mean, these items are pretty straightforward.
Just a question to the chair. So we ran into a problem as a town with conservation drive in the open space that was supposed to be gifted to the town. And so you're saying after the town meeting, acceptance of the road, then transfer would happen?
All happens at once under one vote, because their open space contains the detention basin.
Okay.
That's why it's separate.
Just one clarification.
Yep.
Turn them off.
One of the other open space parcels was already transferred previously. It was one that was separate.
And if the punch list isn't done, they just don't make it onto the annual town meeting for us.
Right.
There's no reason why we'd continue it or if you wanted to, until you feel satisfied that they got punch list thing done.
I mean, we ultimately can decide whether it goes on the warrant or not. Tonight's discussion is really just a hearing, right? So by virtue of having today's discussion, everyone's been put on record that we need that punch list done, and I certainly want town council and land council's opinion. I know they've been asked a couple of things, but, Mr. Swenson, do you want to say anything about your piece of this?
Yeah, Gary, what can you say?
Come on up, sir. Only because you were referenced, I figured, and you're here, if you want to talk about your piece to this and how it may play.
I did hear that...
Say your name and address.
Mr. Sullivan said that Bob, Mr. Pace, is planning on presenting the deeds as soon as the town council approves them. So my first, my reason for being here is it's been 18 years since this project started, and at the start, we were asked to give up our old undefined right-of-way.
Okay.
Back to the 1800s, because it went through this large piece of property. So we said okay, with an agreement to that one piece, that 1 acre of land which borders our other property down to the Mumford River. It's just been so long, and with the 1/2 third contracted developer, nothing ever happened. So I don't have it, so I still am leery about getting it, because I'm the small pea in the pod, you know? Town certainly has more clout than I do. And I thought Mr. Pace would be here. He said he would be, but anyway, the taxes are paid. That's another thing I was wondering about. What I heard tonight gives me hope, anyway. So it was just part of the agreement, the original agreement back to 2006, the original development with seven lots instead of 12. So that was carried forward, and I'm glad it was, it was put on the plan, because if it hadn't been, it'd be a different story.
Okay, done now?
Okay.
Okay, that's about it.
It's not your first rodeo, Bill.
My first rodeo?
It's not your first rodeo.
No, it's not my first rodeo, but they're kind of alike, aren't they?
Yeah.
You got to ride the bull?
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sir, did you have something you wanted to add? I can't read the...
I believe the planning board made a similar, Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they made a similar condition that they wanted to see that piece brought over to, or needed over to Swenson before they acted on their final say, too. They had some conditions upon their approval.
Yes.
Which was basically getting the punch list done on the bounds and transferring the deed over to Mr. Swenson, so that, that's all happening.
Yeah.
I'm sorry you had to wait 18 years, so all my time.
All right, anyone else at the table? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this while we're still in the public hearing?
I have a couple of questions.
Come on up, state your name, sir, and let us have it.
John Murphy, I live on Whitten Heights. What does this mean for who's taking care of the road this winter?
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Mr. Pace has to take care of it until it's accepted in the spring, so he has one more winter to take care of it.
Mr. Pace is on jack shit. So the town obviously has some kind of agreement with the builders. We've come to you in the past, and nothing's been done. We went through 2 and 1/2 feet of snow, and no one showed up. You guys got lucky. Pregnant women, a couple sick people, COVID. Then you had two years of no snow. What the hell happens when we get another 2 years now? This guy has been nowhere. He doesn't answer phone calls, people just stop calling him. Residents are paying to get the street plowed. I don't see any return on my tax dollar for that.
Is there any...
You guys have a legal department, and you need to use it.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not done. What are these two gravel entryways that have to be cut in, and why are they being cut in?
They're around the basins so that we can access the basins to maintain them on the bottom of the subdivision near the cul-de-sac.
So down at the bar?
Yes.
But wasn't that, didn't he have to do that like two summers ago? And then I'm done. This is what you get with this builder. What are the 11 bombs or ballards or whatever? What are those? And where do they go on the street, and what do they do?
They're bounds that go on the corners of the property at the roadway so that you can have surveys done in the future so that we know what the markings are for permanent bounds.
Are those legally binding type of things?
Yes.
Just control points for your survey.
And there's two of these gravel things being put in, one on the north, and where is the north? What's the north?
There's 11 total.
They're on the plan.
There, if you want to check it out.
So other than the big loud thud, when I asked my first question, what are we doing?
This is the end of the cul-de-sac, and this is where the drainage basin is, and there's a gravel access road that's been overgrown through the years that comes down and takes a right and goes around the basin for maintenance till you get to the control structure on the other side. That's where we're proposing to clean up. Also, part of the agreement was to provide a gravel access strip down to this pinch point where these stone walls meet for access... down to this pinch point where these stone walls meet for access down for, I believe, Mr. Swenson.
Well, I hope poor Mr. Swenson gets what he wants after 20 years. And I'm not saying that's Bob Pace's fault either. But if he wants it and needs it, he should get it.
So to the point of snow removal, what leverage do we have in regards to ensuring the job is done better in advance of?
Well, no, not better, just done.
Done.
At all.
How does the town handle snow removal for safety reasons and private ways?
Hold on, sir.
This is what you get.
Hold on.
Paid his taxes last Friday.
Sir, he's asking a question. You're interrupting the meeting. Go ahead, Matt.
Ask the question.
Do you to the town administrator? How does the, how does the highway department typically handle emergencies when private roads are not maintained?
We were told you wouldn't do it.
Well, here's the thing, there is a bond for this project.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, if the town has to step in to do anything, it's probably working with the highway department and legal regarding the bond for reimbursement. If the town's going to send a contractor, you know, a plot truck up there to plow it, I think that would probably be something we'd have to look into, take, have that in there. For private roads, it's usually upon the developer. But again, to what's being, you know, brought up here by the neighbors, you know, we're, I think the developer's trying to get acceptance of the road. And I think, but we have to have some maturities that there, people are going to be able to, the road's going to be plowed.
Finish coat on the roof?
Yes.
So the pavement is done and the drainage is done. I despise bureaucratic nooks and crannies. Government exists to serve people. So if it's up to me, if the board wanted to authorize me, we would just plow this road. But we often hold things hostage because only the binder is down and the developer isn't finishing. And we either have to call the bond and we don't send our equipment out onto an unfinished roadway that the town has not yet accepted. But we're kind of at a point now where if this is going to be where we are, we're going to put it on spring for acceptance and the finish coat is already down. The only thing I would want from the developer is to know that they're going to clean out those storm catch basins and that the drainage is going to flow properly and we won't have too much ice on this road. But we, once a road has been deemed private as a, as a public way, but it is a private road, town meeting in Douglas back in the 1950s mandated that highway would plow those roads. So we get caught between the planning board's process and the consensus of the town that even private roads like Perry Street Extension and others do get plowed by the town. So left to my devices, I would plow it, especially since it's pavement, not dirt.
And I agree with that. The only thing that I would add to it is probably have Adam go up there and make sure that there's any potential problems that, so we're not liable for any damage, I guess.
So please don't put your basketball hoop in the middle of the cul-de-sac.
Right.
Let's start.
Actually, the road drains very well.
Sure does.
It's brand new.
Well, let's move ahead and authorize it. Do we need a vote? Well, that's something.
Yeah, that would be a little separate.
It would help them, belts and suspenders.
But we're, it's not on our agenda for that. Can we handle that under, we're still in the public meeting, hearing as well. But is that something we put on the next agenda and just vote on it properly?
The Open Meetings Act point is well taken. Hopefully it won't snow before the next meeting, just put it on the next agenda.
Thank you.
How's that? Pretty good? All right.
Thank you. And I will say that the town did come in after the snowfall, when people were stuck in the roads. But we all have jobs and some of us have jobs that we have to be there for. 10 and 12 and 18 hours a day.
No, I understand. Anyone else?
I have a question.
If you could, please stand and just state your name for the record. Good evening.
My name is Amrin and we live in Nine Witten Heights. So the builder who doing the marking, like, you know, it's like kind of our property also. So I don't know that they are going to cut that part from there or the road that you guys are talking about because we just done our, like, you know, from rocks from that side. And it's not the property of the town because they have the, you know, the sticks they put in?
Sticks.
The line that, what do you call it, that town line, right, the marking?
Block.
Yeah, so it was like, you know, behind that. It's not like, you know, beyond that or like near it. It's like further away. But the person who came, it was like, you know, he was doing it. Our rock line is like that and he put the lines, the markers over there. Like, I don't know, white or orange, I don't know what that means are. So and, and the other thing is I don't know it's supposed to, I should say that. The person who came, it's like, you know, they run the dog in our yard and he was pooping around in our yard. And I said, I don't know who was the guy because I didn't, I didn't know who's the guy without leash.
What would that be, Matt?
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
Yeah, just one second. Sir, do you have any comment to that if you heard that?
My daughter saw it.
I can speak to that. I went out there and I marked it for dig safe so that we could get the utilities marked out. I think during the sidewalk, Matt and I both noticed that stone swale that the woman is referring to. And it, some of it does come onto the town property because they don't, they don't own to the pavement, to the curving, which I think is what she's talking about.
She said, my daughter was saying like, you know.
You know how there's a space of grass in between like the curving in the back of the, for the right of way? Because the right of way is wider than the actual cul-de-sac.
Yeah, so like, you know, I just, she was saying just like, you know.
I think she's worried about her stones getting disturbed, but her stones are within our right of way.
Not the disturb, sir.
And I went, like I said, I went out and I put white markings in and they say de-cast for dig safe so that we can get that all marked out so when we go out there to clean up.
One at a time, please, let it finish.
I believe that was my dog. It definitely was off leash. She's usually right next to me. If she wandered off and pooped in your yard, I'm very, very sorry. If I ever bring her back there again, I will keep her on leash. And again, I apologize for that. I did not see that nor mean for that to happen.
That's, that's fine. My more concern is like, you know, that about that line that you guys put it in our, like, you know, area. I don't know what's going to happen next, that that thing is, will cut off or because we just paid $6,000 last August, this August, for, for that rock wall that we made it. It's just like, you know.
It sounds like there might be a boundary confusion.
It's not the boundary, it's just for, for, for the beauty of the yard, what do you call it, landscaping.
It's not the wall, wall, just. They go right to the edge of the pavement.
Right, and the edge of the pavement is for them the right of way. The right of way is what would become of the town.
Yeah, but it, it won't affect that, that rocks that we put it. Like, my question is this.
Right of way or no, we recognize the work that had been done? This to keep the peace? I don't know the land we're talking about.
We could try to avoid it, but it's within the right of way, it becomes the town, right?
Yeah, it's the town, but the neighbor maintains, right, the fresh brick, right? And they don't just move to their property, so.
It's an easement on their, on their land, so.
Respect the rocks.
Look, there's no reason to remove the rocks.
No, I think it was like.
But there's no such thing as adverse possession against a municipality. So simply by putting the rocks there and leaving them for 20 years, the town of Douglas ever needed to move them, it could. So I don't think, I haven't seen the specific wall, but before investing in significant hardscape, you just have to make sure you know where the boundary of your property.
No, sir, that's what I'm telling you, like.
I know what you're saying and I'm not agreeing. I'm saying that you have built your wall in the town's right of way. We don't have any reason to move it. It could probably stay there for a very long time. Just putting you on notice that simply by occupying the space, you will not get an ownership right in it. So if the town ever needed, say to increase the size of that cul-de-sac, it would have the right to do so.
Even though like, you know, if the builder's saying, oh, this is your, like, you know, house property, even though I'm talking about that side. They're saying, oh, this is like, you know, your, your line, your property, your backyard or front yard.
Builder, surveyor.
Because that's why we did it. If I know like, you know, town will do like anything or they, it's a town property, so we cannot touch it. So why should we spend $6,000 for the town property, right? We shouldn't do it, right? If we know.
Once the bounds are in place, this will probably be more definitive.
This is one of the most common issues in municipal property law anywhere. All roadways and rights of way have town property beyond the edge of the pavement. It's necessary for the maintenance of roadway. So anyone who told you that your property went to the edge of the pavement, said so in error and should have known better because that simply isn't the rule. But as I've said, there is no reason for the town to disturb what you've done there. It's just a, it's a notice courtesy to you to remind you that if you place something in the town's right of way, and Adam was talking earlier about snow removal, if you put your mailbox in the town's right of way, you don't have an easement and we plow it over. It's not our problem, right? Because it's not, it's not town property. It's personal property placed in the town's right of way. So I don't think, the kinds of clearances you'll have on this roadway, that this would be an issue plowing the street or moving the snow or being clipped by the edge of a plow blade or anything. So if it's not, I don't really think it's going to be an issue.
We don't see a real problem like this is what we're thinking.
Only that, that's the thing, like the concern, like, you know, there is the putting the, like, mark, mark over there. And so what's going on with this, spend that much money and like, you know? So that's a concern, that's why, like, you know.
It's one of the reasons why a builder is required to put the bounds into a subdivision. And when they come late to the show with the bounds, it becomes troublesome for everyone trying to find a control point to draw the lines for the lots.
Jude, having been out there, are you in agreement that there's no real need to disturb what's there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, he saw it, so he knows what I'm talking about. If he was, of course.
I believe we can get around it. It's, it's just probably a two-foot wide row of riverstone, like white decorative riverstone.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's definitely on the open space land. I don't know who builder, where her property marker was, but we don't, we don't have a problem with it and we're not planning on moving it. We're going to go right on the edge of it. My marks are wider than what we're going to wreck because I need to encompass all the utilities that are within that area. So that mark that I put on the pavement, it doesn't necessarily mean that that's your property marker or any, has nothing to do with that. That's just an area that I would like marked by dig safe to show all the utilities between those two arrows.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Hope that was helpful.
Yeah, if not, I would come again.
We're not in the business.
I'll have to, not for tonight.
Say again, Jude?
Sorry again about the dog. I guess I won't fear tonight.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
Come on up, sir.
Yeah, this is Ashish Shalam, I decide, Two Witten Heights. So I have a couple of questions. So first is, thanks a lot because that was my major concern about the ice. You know, but again, since you already answered. So another is, I just want to understand, I think it, it is known as the walkway, you know, in the front, you know, like there's some space for the grass, like it's only on the one side, not on the other side. So is it the town who is going to maintain it?
So there's space in between the sidewalk and the roadway?
Yeah.
Yeah, the town maintains that, yeah. The sidewalk is part of the right of way and the strip inside.
Strip of grass?
Yeah. Is it inside the sidewalk?
So it'd be curb, strip, sidewalk, lawn, yeah.
So, yeah, so town will be responsible for maintaining it, you know, putting some grass, good grass and mowing it. Because we are just spending a lot of, you know, money in having, you know, the, mowing it and putting the grass.
To his question, when they come in and clear this in up to a month, what are you doing with it? Is it going to be planted? Is it going to be seeded? Is it just going to regrow every year? That's, I think, what we're trying to get at.
Part of our subdivision rules and regs said that any disturbed area needs to be loamed and seeded prior to, prior to town acceptance.
Let's make sure we understand the question that she's asking now because referring to the, the big strip or the, a little strip in between the sidewalk and the hill?
He lives on the up, he lives on the even side. I live on the odd side.
Even side, I'm on the even side. On the even side, we have this, some grass.
So it's a very narrow strip between him and what would be scrubs that I assume you won't be coming in to cut those down.
Is that near a drainage?
No, it's a whole row, I'm just talking about.
It's right at the beginning, there's two strips.
It's right at the opening of the Douglas doorway in Witten Heights.
If you looked up at my screen, there's two strips up here of open space. Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Right here and right here. And what he's saying is there's a sidewalk there with a grass strip in between, but the edge of the woods is, you know, a couple of feet past where the sidewalk is. And they're wondering who's going to maintain that shoulder where the open space, when the town owns the open space, I suppose. And then there's a mailbox on this side, but there's no sidewalk on this side. So this is just going to get cut, the brush is going to get cut back away from the edge of pavement, but someone's going to have to maintain that. And I think he's asking who's going to be maintaining that so that those two pieces don't start growing over the sidewalk and over the street.
That's in front of the town open space.
Typically, typically, we wouldn't mow the grass, but we have, we would cut back the brush if it impacted the sidewalk on the road.
And just from the past experience with subdivisions, usually the abutting neighbor would courtesy mow it, you know what I mean? To maintain a little strip for visibility and stuff like that, but it's not done by the town.
But it's not done by the town?
No, not, not usually. Usually a neighbor would just mow it because it's making their area look nicer and stuff like that. So, you know, in most subdivisions, the neighbor's maintaining a little bit extra, you know, this area.
But I thought it should be done by the town, isn't it? Because if it is something which the town is maintaining everything, so they should maintain this.
These are the details, Mr. Chairman, that the planning board needs to pay attention to when these plans come before them. Because when the highway department adds up all these little doodads and doohickeys all over the town of Douglas where attention was not paid to detail, we have drainage swales and detention ponds and all kinds of things that the town is on the hook to maintain. And up and, we have not purchased and don't have the piece of equipment that will be necessary to do this.
All the manpower.
We've, we've hired out for this for the past many years now. A gentleman with a tractor with a boom and a brush hog comes along the sides of the roads and cuts to the edge of the right of way typically just to keep the golden rod and all the weeds from encroaching on the roadway. This is different. This is the entryway to a subdivision. I can't see the dimensions on your plan, but about how long does that run? 20 feet, 30 feet?
One, I would say the left side is about 100 feet and the right side is about 200 feet.
Well, that's a really long distance. That's a little bit too much to ask a neighbor to do.
Yeah, this whole part, yeah, I think that, what you just mentioned, that you had to rent. I mean, that's, that's probably what is necessary to do that job.
I didn't see any dimensions. So in my defense, I just went like this, 20 feet, but it's a hundred. But it's 100. I'd like some time, Mr. Chairman, to talk to the highway superintendent about our approach to this and get back to you.
Does that bond potentially cover that?
No.
No.
Nope, it's not an operating bond.
So the answer to, we're going to look into it further?
Yeah, I have another question. So, you know, like, I'm not very much clear about my markings, specifically, you know, from the backside. Because I thought like whatever builder put, you know, the stones, that's my place. But a couple of days or weeks back on the, I realized that, no, I have not much area which builder, I'm not sure why he didn't, you know, put anything. He just put all the stones inside my boundary and I have a couple of feet, you know, 20, 30, 40 feet. I'm not sure. You know, like in the woods as well. I'm not sure how much. So how town can hit me in that?
Yeah, that's really it. Once we put the bounds in, that gives any survey or control point to be able to survey your lot. But any of the rest of the pins and bounds, I mean, we can't control that here.
How many rocks are we talking about here? Is it a pile of rocks or...
Yeah, pile of rocks. Like the, you know, the builder just put the sort of a boundary, actually. But again, because now I need to do some fencing, right? And while doing some measurement, I realized that, no, this is not the right thing. This area is not right. So check some apps.
Sure, if you're the proud owner of a pile of rocks that you thought was the boundary and now it's all on your...
No, actually, the thing is that now someone, you know, need to, you know, I need someone who can just remove, you know?
Remove the rocks.
Remove the rocks, actually. Because this is something, I'm not sure why this builder did with me.
As a courtesy, Jude, can you mention it to Mr. Pace and see if you can move the rocks? Put the bounds in quicker? Still there, Jude?
Well, if I understand what he's trying to ask, those rocks were placed prior to him purchasing the land to outline the edge of the woods. So I don't think Mr. Pace is going to go in after the fact and move rocks for him when he... I don't know. It's just what I hear him saying. That's on his property. Maintaining the right-of-way, he has valid points with who's going to maintain the right-of-ways when you come into the lot, come into the roadway. But what's on his individual lot is what he purchased in that condition.
But yeah, but again, there was no markings, right? Like, and being a first-time owner, right? How I will get to know? So, you know, I just trusted the builder that, okay, whatever boundary he's putting, this is my area, right? But when I measured it, that was not right, right? And I have no idea how much I'm having. And again, I do not want to be in the situation that, okay, I'm just putting something in, you know, the town's land, right? So...
Once, I have a few suggestions for you, sir. There's a foundation as-built plan that was built and a set-to-gas-built plan. But in a few weeks, these bounds that we're talking about that show a definitive point on everybody's along the roadway, that's where you'll be able to measure off of accurately and you'll be able to tell where your property is. I can tell you right now that those rocks are within your property. They don't define your property line.
Exactly.
He just pushed them out to the edges and clearing. Whether he should have done that or not, that's what happened and that's what you now own. But when those bounds go in, you'll be able to tell exactly where your property lines are.
No, but again, you're saying you're going to mark it. Sorry, again, I'm not sure if I get it correctly. So you were going to mark, you know, from all the sites, the boundary for all the houses?
No.
Yeah, but because, you know, like if you're saying on the front only and my is, you know, that's not a straight line. It will be a grid, right? And if you are asking me to measure it, I don't think I'm the right person.
No, they're going to install boundaries that allow a surveyor to more easily measure where your property boundaries are. But the other message here, and this is a really difficult message in Massachusetts, this is a caveat emptor state. The buyer beware. So if you purchase the property with the rocks where they are, you purchased the property with the rocks where they are. Never say anything the town could do to give you relief.
Can I add one thing to this conversation if you guys don't mind?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You know the Jason, the next door, that house number eight?
Yeah.
Next to us? He called someone from the town, I don't know who. And he came to his house because he wanted to measure where is our line and where is his line? And he marked the line for him. After that, he put the boundary.
Yeah, at least if I can give that at least. Like what is my actual area, right? I know what you're saying that, okay, you cannot help me and... I'm sorry.
Just through the chair. I think a lot of your questions, Jude, the engineer involved, and when he schedules to put the bounds in, which are concrete markers, then he can give you like a plot plan where, pretty fine where the bound is. That's what your need. So I would probably follow up with him when he's going to schedule to install the bounds for the subdivision. And from that, you can have a plot plan to be able to measure and be able to carry forward. I think that's really...
That's...
You're waiting for things to be done in certain order.
That's the starting point before you can really dig into what it is you're looking at.
Jude, just for clarity, these, the bounds that you're putting in are only on the front property line?
That's correct.
I just want to make sure that they understand you're not marking all sides of their property. You're putting control points just along the street on their front property line, correct?
It might not even be on their corner.
No, but it's only going to be on the front line. It's not going to be in the woods.
That is correct.
Correct.
So what typically happens in these subdivisions is as people buy these lots and they want to landscape them because they only get a certain amount of money from the builder and they want to come out and improve their landscaping, they usually, once the bounds are installed, they usually hire a survey company or, you know, someone like me or somebody else. It doesn't really matter. But that's when they go out and they actually mark their lot lines. A lot of people that buy subdivision lots think that they're going to get their whole entire lot staked out as part of the roadway layout, but that's just not the case. The case is that if they ever want to know exactly where their property lines are, they have recoverable monumentation along the roadway that is legal with and has been recorded at the registry of deeds and gone through town meeting. That's what counts. And then that's the plan that I would look up and then go and stake out the rest of their lots. And I mean, that's typically the way that it happens. So I don't know if the builder went out, if it was a Realtor. You don't know how many times I've had a Realtor go out somewhere and point, yeah, there's your lot line and it's not even close. I think everybody's had that happen, but I don't...
Through you to the chair. When do we expect the bounds to be in?
Like I said, we started the process and we're mobilizing probably the end of next week. So within the next couple of weeks, we're trying to, you know, nail what's going to be against the snow, if there is any issue. But we're waiting for the leaves to leave the leaf so we get the machines there and then the machines to be used to date the bounds.
Okay.
Couple of weeks.
Is there anyone else in the audience?
One last question. You guys kidded about it at the beginning. What happens if they don't get this stuff done and it's not put on the town meeting warrant next year?
It doesn't get accepted.
And what happens?
That's a crystal ball question. Let's assume that everything's going to run fine and wait until the problem presents itself before we anticipate one, right? It sounds like they're going to finish what they need to do. They have a pretty clear punch list that they have to do. The engineer stating that he's going to put in all the bounds and these other things that he's going to do. Town administrator has volunteered the services of the highway department to plow your roads, so that's off the table. I think you're moving in the right direction, so.
Okay.
I'm not a what-ifs guy. Just pick up on it.
Any further discussion on the public hearing? Take a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Made by Mike, seconded by Ross. Roll call vote. Smith, aye.
Stephen, aye.
Patrick, aye.
Bone, aye. Five-oh. We just jump all over.
Got to keep it interesting.
Keep the flow. Wherever it starts, work clockwise, I guess. All right, what's the will of the group? This moment. Excuse me, guys, we're in a meeting. Do you...
Yeah, we don't even need to talk about it now.
Yeah, do you think...
What's that?
Jude's saying possibly four weeks to have these bounds in. Should we give him six weeks and...
They got until May.
Well, we got till May to get it on the agenda, on the warrant.
Right.
Should we revisit, make sure this punch list is getting done?
We got to get feedback from Mr. Benoit and the planning board.
Yeah.
I think the planning board needs to weigh in on a couple of issues that came up tonight.
Right. Adams and the...
At least let's put on like the first, second week or second meeting in December, just to see where we are. Can do that? Yeah, exactly.
The planning board should meet before then, so.
All right. Good. I think that was helpful and because a little solution to the snow removal problem in that part of town, then kudos. All right, we jumped around a little bit. We'll move on to...
He closed the public hearing, but didn't make a motion.
I didn't hear what is happening with White's...
Right. You guys didn't make a motion.
To do what?
To put it on the warrant or not.
Oh, we thought we had time.
Is it being put on the spring warrant or is it...
Quite possibly, absolutely yes. We're just slowly...
Maybe no.
I don't think no, but we're methodical about it. We're going to look at...
So are you going to continue the hearing, honor?
No, we had our hearing. I think at this point...
Public hearing's been open and closed, so that's already done.
It's been open and closed and... Okay, so the hearing was just talking about it.
And we have every intention of putting it on...
Yeah.
On the December meeting.
We have every intention of putting it on the annual town meeting warrant.
If Mr. Pace does his thing.
Does X, Y, and Z.
That they get all their tasks done. The other thing that came out, I don't know if you heard it right, but they don't have to wait until the town meeting to convey the land and the easement to yourself. He said that once town council looks at it and they're supposed to do that.
I heard that part. Interested in the whole development being finished.
Yep.
Yeah.
18 years is a long time. It sounds like it would help everybody for that project, including the town, for that project to be completed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so...
All right, moving on. All right, thank you. Moving on to the review the warrant articles for our special town meeting. Had my packet, it's a disaster. Do we want to go in order? Do we want to punch through Matt's stuff first? Jane, do you want to come up?
There's a memo.
All right. If we do that, will you be able to go home?
I think so.
Let's do that then.
Can we wait on the memo?
Let's get Matt home. Go ahead, Matt.
Also get... So that'd be Article 8 first for the scenic road.
Scenic road.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's not scenic road. Article 7 is scenic road. Apologies. Yeah, nothing's changed on this. Town council's okay with the language. I don't have any concerns here. Happy to answer any questions of the board. All this item was, was to add the tree warden item under number 2 or B2. Dangerous and unhealthy trees within the right-of-way in the opinion of the tree warden may be removed by the town without filing an application hereunder. Notice shall be provided the planning board. That's the only language that's been added to this.
Very good. The ADU unit warrant.
So as I mentioned before, the ADU bylaw kind of came up and kind of crept up on all of us when the state allowed these by right in August and issued a memorandum to all the cities and towns and told us that the ADU is going to be allowed by right in residential zones effective February 2 of next year. So it gives the towns only this fall town meeting to try to get a bylaw in place to try to govern how many ADUs can be on each parcel. And that's what we've put together here. This has been vetted by council. The planning board will be reviewing this at their public hearing per MGL 48, section 5, next Wednesday. I don't anticipate a whole lot of feedback. They've already had a chance to look at this unless there's any public comment. But the only item that was added recently was 3.3.2.4. Per town council, said any restriction on the use of existing legal ADUs in town are, upon effective date of this bylaw null and void. That's the use restrictions, that it has to be a family member or a blood relative. Those no longer apply with the new regulations by the state. Otherwise, happy to answer any questions.
Just on that section, and that includes the special permit required every three years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
And then central mass planning has a pair-to-peer ADU workshop scheduled for October 29. Is owner going to be able to attend that?
Probably.
Okay. So I'd be curious what the other communities are doing and stuff like that. I mean, we might be ahead of them, you know, which would be a good... Usually sometimes the case, so. Thank you.
Yep.
And Matt, I was flipping through this so I didn't catch everything that you said. The units that are over 900 square feet, how's that addressed?
Those become pre-existing non-conforming.
Is that wording in here at all or no?
There's reference to pre-existing non-conforming in 3.3.6. Talks about proposed pre-existing non-conforming primary residence. Should provide, no special permit may consider the ADU used or imposed condition on such use. I don't think that actually talks about the pre-existing square footage, but obviously anything that predates this bylaw and zoning becomes grandfathered naturally through Mass General Law. But I don't think we had to put anything in here specifically.
I believe we only have like two, maybe three units that are about...
Yeah.
It's good to be proactive here as opposed to reactive.
Right. The whole point was to try to make it so that you can only do one ADU through site plan review, and then two, if you want to do two, you need a special permit for any additional ADU unit. So you have to conform with the neighborhood and go through all the special permit criteria from the Planning Board. Otherwise, we didn't do this bylaw, people could put up as many ADUs as they want on one parcel. So we have to do something.
Town could look different with some entrepreneurial builders.
Right.
I feel compelled to say this, Mr. Chairman. This, with a whisper, is the demise of single-family residential zone. And no one should be naive to the fact that is what this has accomplished, that every single-family lot anywhere in the Commonwealth has been turned into at least a two-family lot.
Potentially.
Theoretically, right, there are going to be things that limit you, set up, water, sewer. But the reality is, it simply no longer exists in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is a very bold stretch. So everybody should take note that regardless of whatever judgment our community made in establishing zoning map to establish a single-family residential, those judgments have been thrown out by superseding state law.
With a strike of a pen, Planning Board, ZBA workers, I wouldn't say wiped out, but yeah, wiped out.
He's got three more in there.
Yeah, we good with that? Planning Board enjoys part of that?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Matt.
Article 9, Green Community Grant Funding. I just submitted this application today. This is for LED lighting at the middle school. We're hoping to get $100,000 from Green Community with the town match of $28,000. It's 23 for the, I'm sorry, about 24 and change, and then 23 and change from the town, and then $4,000 for CMRPC to administer it. Comes out to like 27 and change, so we rounded up to 28 for the request for the town. Project costs, what was it, $127,000? Just do all the LEDs at the middle school.
That grant's contingent upon favorable view of a town meeting here?
Yes.
Anyone else on Article 9? Was that nine? Yeah. Then Old Webster, Old Douglas Road, sorry.
So, Old Webster Road is a wallpaper street that doesn't exist anymore because it was removed when we put in Route 16, long, long, long ago. What we have here is a private property owner has plans to develop the parcel. However, Old Webster Road kind of bisects it. Now, that's a county road, and county doesn't exist anymore, so it transferred all this over to the town. The Select Board, 20 years ago, maybe even longer, had voted to abandon its maintenance of this road, but it requires a town meeting vote to dispose of real property. That's why it's here. This, I mean, there's more Old Webster Road bisecting two state parcels, but what's on the warrant is to only remove it off of this private parcel. Andy Leonard is here and can answer any questions about it if it's a private property owner.
Is that inhibiting a project in Douglas that we...
What?
Inhibiting, we're taking this action for a reason, to assist the project?
Yeah, so there's a project that's approved by the Planning Board, but it has a fenced-in area, and this fence would go across the right of way, and it's kind of a useless right of way. It's an old road that doesn't need our attention anymore, so.
Seems pretty...
Article 13.
Yeah. So you're here, right? You have anything you'd like to add, or...
No, I just had fun watching the previous stuff here.
It's awesome fun, isn't it?
You're in the rock business, you want to help the guy out?
I wanted to.
Is it stolen? You don't know.
Thank you.
Good night. All right, so we're helping the development there by ignoring that road further.
Yes.
And then the Gleason Court?
So Gleason Court, this is a transfer of land from the school department's control to the Select Board control. The school department voted on May 1st to dispose of this as noneducational purposes, so it's, I think, it's a certain square footage or .29 acres that it, the survey, the surveyors are out there now, they're supposed to be giving me a plan. I don't know if we'll have it in time for town meeting, so this might be the best representation we have at town meeting. But the survey should be done soon, I think. They've already done their measurements, just waiting for an A&R plan for the Planning Board to come and transfer this to the Select Board. The purpose of this is to make the old grammar school conform with rear yard setbacks or side yard setbacks for this property.
For the purposes of town meeting, this graphic is perfectly suitable. You don't have to get down to the inch, right?
No. Just to be very slow and methodical about it, town meeting will transfer subject parcel to the Select Board's control from the school committees. Then the Select Board will go through whatever process is necessary with the Planning Board to have this approved as an A&R, merge all parcels into one marketable lot of the building. And then I believe this was all written into one, correct, Matt?
Yes. The vote to supersede all prior town meeting votes.
Authorizes the Select Board to dispose of the resulting parcel. So this is a, I'm dating myself, we used to refer to these as multiple reentry vehicles. This is a merved.
Merved, yeah. Nuclear warhead.
Yes. But there are multiple directions and authorizations in this article. So, and we'll begin from the school department to the Select Board. Then, once the lot is created, the Select Board is authorized to dispose of the resulting parcel, and there will not be any restriction from any prior vote of any prior town meeting binding on that disposal decision. I've learned that when Lisa thinks I forgot to say something, she should speak up, because she's always right.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I was about utility easement leading to school court. Remember that was mentioned last meeting?
You wanted to make sure that the...
Hi, Bob Sullivan. Yeah, I just want to make sure people know that we have a water main that leads over to feed the houses on school court, and comes up at Gleason, down that kind of little dirt roadway there that leads over to school court. So if we sell that parcel off, we need to maintain an easement within that property.
I'll make sure the surveyor knows.
Is that inferred in our action? Is that inferred in our action of this article?
No, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. When we look to defuse the lot, we'll make sure the deed has the mention of easement first.
Any questions for Matt on this or any other article before us? Matt, thank you.
Sure thing. Under your Article 1, the item for community development expenses, previously we came in and talked about highway bounds as being a standalone article, but instead those are getting wrapped into this as $20,000, and then the other $20,000 would go towards Brandon Fanaf, the retaining conservation agent. So that's the 40K that you see here. Just wanted to mention that while I'm here.
So that 40 is for the conservation agent and...
And the highway bounds.
And the bounds.
Yes.
Is that how we done the bounds before, Matt? Put that in the community development budget?
No.
Will this get confusing?
Town meeting article. Well, I believe the only other time it was done, Mr. Cundep asked for it, and I believe it was a freestanding...
We did it twice.
Yeah.
But because there was such a list, when we spoke to, spoke about it, we just said, what if we just put money in their budget until the bounds are done?
Yeah.
So the $20,000 should be rolled into their operating budget and dwindle the list down. Instead of having a special article for each one, because then you worried about the residual and whether or not you have enough money. I think the last time there was concern about the amount that was funded, when it was a special article.
Makes sense. Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Safe.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob. Bob, are you here for anything else?
Yes.
Probably the Depot Street.
Okay. All right. Seeing as this is our pass before we close the warrant, we'll dig into this article by article as we have been. We'll just start with Article 1. Some housekeeping, some decent line items there. Who wants to take the lead? Les? But he's the new guy.
The IT expenses, is that for hardware down hall?
No. The IT expenses are going up because our Microsoft 365 subscriptions cost is going up per user substantially from one year to the next. The new game that we play, buy a printer that needs a new cartridge every three weeks, use software on a subscription basis and pay for it every year instead of sticking the floppy in your tower and making it last three or four, right? Looking at you, because that's the industry you work in.
I know. But you're, listen, $30,000 for expenses for IT is, you know...
It's minimal, but we already budgeted this, these subscriptions, they just came in higher than...
Oh, no, no, 100%. No, no, it's, I mean, nowadays what you need to support, you know, businesses and municipalities for IT expenses, it's, you know...
I just don't want people to think we go from zero to 30.
Oh, no, no.
We're adding 30 to.
Highway maintenance expense increased to 10?
Adam has a list of repairs that he had to do. Again, you know, part of what we do with Article 1 is because the budget's done in March for the following fiscal year, we touch base with the departments and see where they are at the end of September to see if there's any needs that need to be addressed. Adam had an increase in repairs, so we wanted to make them kind of whole as he heads to the winter. And you'll also notice he has tree warden as well, and that's something we look at at every fall town meeting. We amend or add to their tree warden budget.
Looks like the selectmen are bucking for raises, huh?
That is for the minute taker.
Yeah, sorry. Happy you.
Worth every penny.
That's right.
Some of these I dug into already. Any questions on 1? Additional? Go on to Article 2, the supplemental budget. It'll say a lot of X's here, so we've buttoned up things considerably, so thank you. Mike, do you have anything to add here as you're on that committee?
Nope, there's not much on here that we're doing. The, we have three different lighting, oh, well, we have three different lighting programs that are doing the LED upgrades, the town hall, the police department, and the post office. The Lucas device, they've had a problem with one since June, so that one needs to be replaced. So we really didn't have a lot of time to put a lot of effort into that. We just have to get the device, so that's why that's on there. The school security system came in a little higher than we anticipated, so we're looking for some additional funding. If you recall, we put in $225,000 from Opera Funds, put another $140,000, and we transferred from the oil tank from last year, which I was reminded, because I forgot about it, but I asked a question and I was reminded that we had transferred that at town meeting. So we're still short a few pennies to get that done. One of the issues was a major change order came in when they did their exploratory in there, they discovered that the wiring for the cameras, instead of being Cat 5 or Cat 6 or whatever it is, was all coax, which is not usable in that application. You know, what, we go from one license to 22 or something like that?
Yeah, so, not to belabor the point, but it's not all the cameras we're doing in every building, it's just some of them. We had hoped to use existing cabling in existing camera locations. Once the system was taken apart, it proves to be coaxial cable and it's using what's called an encoder to take all the signals from those cameras and translate them into digital format, in a usable format for the switch. And what we're putting in there is not compatible with that system. So whereas before Milestone, which is the name of the software company that does school security cameras and data management, would have given you one license because you had one encoder, now they're saying, no, each individual camera has a license, so it's 22 licenses instead of one. So the costs run up fairly quickly when you have that system, when they have that approach. I'll just say this for folks, for the benefit, that over the years, the school committee and the town of Douglas have made significant improvements to the security of your school buildings and the hodgepodge, you know, piecemeal approach. But it worked because the technology was fairly accessible and open platform, and it made sense. We were evolving to a completely different age, and the trouble is, when you say, I want one system for the whole building, now you have to dismantle the Band-Aids and the bubble gum and everything that held the prior system together, basically replace it with modern devices. So we put this up to bid, we went to town meeting and asked for funds before the bids came back. The bids came back about a month after the May town meeting, and they came in higher. So we were short anyway, and then after this discussion of the change order today, this is the final estimate, amount 304342, that we are asking town meeting for for this project. But that will cover all four schools. And part of the negotiation I conducted this summer was to ask the vendor to hold their prices that they bid. They are under no obligation to do so, but they did. They will hold their prices through December 1st. So if town meeting approves the funds, the contract will be amended and we'll get it at the price they bid.
Excellent. Good. Article 3 is quick, looking to add a chef to the council on aging. That is a non-benefited position.
Correct.
So I watched your, I think it was FinCom. This would get Patrice out of the proverbial kitchen, literal kitchen, I guess, into the community or into the masses, if you will, so I think that's...
We all have loved certain aspects of our job. I think Patrice loves preparing meals, safe, well-cooked meals for the people that frequent the senior center. It's just that it's not the highest and best of Patrice's skills. For her, so she can turn her attention to the bigger picture.
Depot Street project. Bob?
Would you like to proceed on this?
Well, in our notes here, there's a question mark about a sidewalk for $350,000 was an estimate.
Yeah, that's the engineer's estimate. If we want to reset the... So there's granite curb on the right side as you're going up, concrete sidewalks on the left side from Pleasant going up to Martin. It's concrete curb with concrete sidewalk. If you notice when you're driving up, Depot Street, if you look over at the concrete, some of the concrete is kind of undermined there, so there's like no reveal, well, the reveal is showing that there's nothing below the asphalt or a curb. And when we investigated a little bit, had some test assemblies done, to determine the asphalt in the road, we shifted from mill and overlay to full replant. Because the asphalt in the road just beyond the municipal building to the end of the road is not thick enough to do a mill and overlay, and you're not just going to mill and overlay a portion of the road and then reclaim the rest of the road. So when we reclaim this, there's really not going to be anything there for a sidewalk to butt against on the left-hand side. So when we looked at that, we looked to get an estimate on what would be the reset granite curving on the right side, install granite curving on the left side, and then redo the concrete sidewalks. So the estimate came in at about $350,000. So the estimate came in at about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. It was kind of outside of the scope of what we originally intended for the project, but I'm typically of the mindset, if we're going to do the project, I prefer to do it correctly and get it all done at once.
Part of the problem with this, Bob, is also we don't have granite curbs, we have concrete poured in place.
Correct.
Put a viewing out audience. No, I get it.
I think it was the thickness of that.
Well, what's the will of the group? Bob says do the project and do it right. That kind of strikes home. If we don't do the sidewalks, we're less enthused on the project itself? We rolling ankles?
Well, the project will still move forward, but you're going to set yourself up for failure if you don't address the sidewalks all at the same time. Try to be of the habit of completing an area completely, and so we don't have to go back to it.
Trying to do the curbs and the sidewalk after, you'll kind of mangle the roadway. You'd have to cut a strip of the roadway back and want to pull the curb, you can reset it, pour it in concrete, try to, you know, set the curb, or pour in the sidewalks themselves. So you'll have a strip that you kind of have a repaired asphalt patch along the edge of the curbing.
Which is what we're trying to prevent with our five-year rule.
It's a very important project for the future of the town. We just do it the right way and be done with it.
Yeah, how to do less, yes?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be the main runway to get to the town hall, so the granite curving is going to make on both sides. Makes sense.
Would that be the intention, Bob, to put granite curvings back in?
Yeah, so there's already granite curving on the right-hand side. My intent was to put granite curving on the left-hand side, so that you can get it set correctly and pave up to it.
Do it once, do it right.
I'm sure they addressed it, but they considered all the ADA requirements?
I believe so, yes.
If not.
So this is a multi-funded project. You have the use of Opera funds, you have some Chapter Ninety, the three-hundred thousand addresses some of Adam's concerns. You have the use of retained earnings, which Bob seems to think the commissioners would support at four-sixty-one-five-hundred, which would be the engineering portion. There are two small projects, I lost my sheet in my office, of the water sewer department.
Water booster station, the water main, North Street Bridge, and that totaled about twenty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-five dollars and eighty cents.
And I believe, I don't want to speak for you, Bob, but it would be your opinion that the commissioners would expect the town side to pay for the sidewalks?
That's what I believe. I don't want to speak for the commissioners, but just my history with commissioners, that's what I feel that they would be pushing for.
I will say, in previous water sewer projects, it was always, or the last two bonding projects were a split between the town and the rate users. It was never.
Fifty-fifty was what.
One of them was seventy-five, twenty-five. Yeah. So the one.
It's pretty close to that now.
Town to rate payer?
Yeah.
Pretty close to that now, actually.
Town and then rate payer?
The town would contribute some.
So the town contributing, the Opera funds, the three-hundred thousand, already correct.
Bob would be, the water sewer department would be looking to borrow the rest of their portion, correct, Bob?
I believe so, yes. We'll have better numbers on the twenty-fifth, I believe. Obviously, we need to get this to the printers, so we're just going with the engineer's estimates right now. Hopefully, bids come in favorable and can reduce any amount that we need to borrow.
So if we were to make a change and include the sidewalks as part of this project, we'd add three-fifty to the one-point-seven?
No.
No.
Two million, thirty thousand.
Less than three hundred, I see, okay. So then you're up to two-point-three-eight?
No, the one-seven-three-zero includes the sidewalks.
Oh, it does?
Oh.
Right, Bob?
I believe so.
So.
Well, the thing is, you're back to the funding source, though, it's whether or not you want to commit, you know, a source like free cash to complete that. I mean.
But the project does include the sidewalks at a million, seven-thirty.
Bob, you have the, in front of you?
Yeah, I have this sheet in front of me, but the million, seven-thirty is factoring the three-hundred thousand for the culvert work from Chapter Ninety money estimated. That's also including, using the twenty-eight thousand out of the previous projects that's remaining balance slid over. That's also including the four-sixty-one-five that I estimate to use out of retained earnings for the engineering during construction oversight. So there's a bunch of numbers that are factored in there. The two-point-oh-three includes all of those funding sources and the Chapter Ninety money.
We put in the one-million, seven-thirty, including the cost of the sidewalk, though.
How much did we earmark on the Opera money?
No, I think that was, I think that did not include the sidewalks.
No, I think it does. I think it does, Bob.
What do we have?
There's two critical questions. Does it include the sidewalks?
Yeah.
And does it include the soft costs?
Which is soft costs.
Your engineering.
That's the four-sixty-one-five-hundred.
Right, is that.
My intention was to pull that money out of retained earnings to pay for those.
Lisa, would we have like one-point-three or one-point-four for the Opera funds?
It was one-point-four.
It was one-point-three-nine-four-one-six-point-four.
Do you recall what your estimate is from the engineer for the water sewer line and the paving? Because if you take three-fifty off there, you're down to under the Opera money, that doesn't sound like it's adding up right. I don't think the sidewalks is figured into that one-point-seven.
No, neither do I. I think the sidewalks was additional.
Yes.
Who wrote that note, question mark sidewalks at? Okay.
It was a very confusing afternoon.
That's how I read that note to read, is that.
I think this article needs to look a lot more like Article Two. Total project costs, all in, soft costs, sidewalks, paving, and then go through how each of those things is going to be paid for.
Correct.
So that the taxpayer knows what they're voting on.
You won't even navigate this at the meeting?
Yeah.
Well, we can't now, so we won't.
Exactly. Then you can highlight where the transfers are coming from, and it's a lot.
Well, that's the thing, because I think your well-informed decision has to include knowing how much free cash you would transfer. Because that is not a bottomless.
Well, yeah, because I don't even know where the funding's coming from, reading through this, because there's multiple ways you can get.
And the other thing that I just want to, we've already gone out and procured the supplies for this project. So this is for the labor portion or the construction portion, Bob?
Yes.
Sorry.
So this is the labor for installation and the engineering oversight.
So your Opera commitment was used to pay for the supplies?
That's five-hundred-five-sixty-seven.
That's not the big number, it's a smaller number.
About eight-hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Eight-hundred-eighty-five-seven-four-eight-fourty.
So, Bob, I'm extremely confused on this now. What's the total project cost?
So, I'm going to help you with this, Bob. So I had to kind of do it so I understood it. You can correct me if I'm incorrect. The total cost, including a four-thousand-dollar buffer, just to get it to a round number, was three-million, four-twenty-one, four-sixteen, forty. Opera funding was one-three-nine-one-four-sixteen, forty. Other financing was two-thousand-thirty thou, two-million, thirty thousand. The funding for that, the two-million, thirty thousand, three-hundred thousand came off the chopper's Chapter Ninety. The water, the closing of the water booster pump station at fourteen-thousand, four-thirty-eight, fifty-three. The water main at North Street Bridge was thirteen-seven-sixty-seven, twenty-seven. The transfer from retained earnings was four-sixty-one-five-hundred. That left a borrowing slash free cash portion of one-million, two-forty-two-ninety-four, twenty.
Yeah, to Matt's point, while you were out of the room, it should, it should be spelled out like it does in Article Two.
It will be. It's just this came in very late. And the decision of the three-fifty needed to be, it would be part of the motion.
Determine before we can finish lining all these numbers up.
Yeah.
So between whether it's borrowing or a free cash, what's that number again?
One-two-four-zero-two-nine-four-twenty. So the three-fifty is what Bob feels the commissioners would not support. That's why it became a town piece. If you wanted to do it. Again, he wasn't speaking for the.
So the three, the three million dollars does not include the sidewalks?
The three-four-twenty-one does include the sidewalks. That's including the sidewalks.
All right, so then when you took all your fees down, you're back down to one-million, two-hundred-and-forty thousand and change? Okay, and that includes the sidewalks?
Correct.
Okay. The sidewalks are messing with my head, that's all. So, and now, we got to come up with the one, one-point-two million dollars? Or part of that is there four-hundred and something?
No, the four-hundred's separate. The one-two would, part of that would be borrowed. The retained earnings can't support that.
From the water sewer folk.
From the water sewer.
So would we be looking to split that somehow?
I think the three-fifty for sure would. Bob, when are your commissioners meeting?
Uh, second Wednesday.
So three-fifty, they're looking to be borrowing nine-hundred thousand? Or eight-hundred-and-ninety?
We would have to have a special review just to discuss this.
Water sewer borrowing nine-hundred thousand?
They have to look at whether or not, what they feel comfortable taking out of retained earnings. They were certified at one-million, five-oh-one. But again, we're putting this number in now. The bids aren't coming until Friday, so we had to put a placeholder.
No, you got it. It was just a lot of numbers, a lot of scenarios going around.
They're not coming until the twenty-fifth.
But for the purposes of tonight's review, we can gain consensus on support for this project and the sidewalks, and wait until Friday to get the numbers to plug.
Friday, the twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth to plug Article Four into this document as it mirrors the format of Article Two.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because you'll have the funding sources listed out.
Yeah.
The three-fifty portion for the sidewalks and stuff like that, are you looking for the town to take, again, because it was done in the past, fifty-fifty with the water sewer?
No, on the sidewalk portion, no, the water, water is looking for us to absorb that entire cost.
Okay, was it true?
Yeah. She told me, she told me three or four times, so she got it buried in my head, so. Before she abused you, I figured I'd help you out.
Wasn't sure, I wasn't sure what the split was or what the split was.
It's not like, did he say free cash was high?
I was just going to say. He's a no, he's not in danger zone.
Not yet.
Let's talk about Gene's secret stash.
That's almost like family.
Right.
All right. Is that enough to go for, forward, the consensus? We can vote if need be, but it feels like the board has.
Makes sense. We're in duck in the next couple of days.
Well, the twenty-fifth will have firm numbers. You know, tonight, we're looking for support and as well as a decision on the sidewalk, with the potential use of free cash of three-hundred-and-fifty.
My freedom-loving folks will pay attention to Article Eight, eminent domain. We just want to point out to them that this is a peaceful.
Article Five?
Article Five. What did I say?
That's a zoning bylaw, but you can put their attention on that, that's what you can use.
Well, they may go freedom. Eminent domain, that's still a friendly.
Yes.
Transaction.
A significant so-called protanto, which is the Latin word for compensation to be paid for mistaking, that was negotiated with the landowner in a firmly conversation. The amount to be paid for the land exceeds the appraisal by a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. That adjustment reflects the value of a small home and some of the existing utility connections that exist to the property, as well as basically some compensation for getting a DM safety report and for removal of some of the small amounts of detritus that are on the property. So that was a negotiated price, so as which Bo and our town council would refer to it as a friendly take, or often significant value that the seller is willing to accept. The eminent domain, therefore, the value of it is what it does by operation of law is it clears title and bests the title in the town. I just, because I'm keeping a running total, I want to go back to previous conversations, Mr. Chairman, if I may. It's timely. So we use eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand of free cash for this property. We had Article Two at four-oh-one-two-two-one. We have an article deeper in the conversation regarding the fire station at two-three-three-three-ninety. I'm at one-five-zero-nine-six-one-one. And if you add three-fifty to that, you're at one-eight-five-nine-six-one-one, being transferred from free cash at this town meeting.
And.
A certified balance of three-point-seven.
Another twenty-eight thousand for green communities. So you're at one-eight-eight-seven.
Let's you down to five digits, that's your domain, isn't it? And I care about it, I just don't lose sleep over it. But I'm just, the magnitude is that this would be half of your free cash before you even do capital flex.
Capital, OPEV, snow and ice, and all the other funds. Troubling rating agencies that much, using that much of it, or?
The use of it is not. What you would have left, would it trigger a higher score for the town in a bond rating exercise? Because you need to be at ten percent or higher, I guess, because.
You could choose to borrow the three-fifty as part of their bonding, but.
Yeah, and once again, I'm not trying to weigh in whether you should or should not. I'm simply making sure that all the information you need to make a decision.
Paying attention, that depends on the one, the only.
It's a big hit.
Give it to the town forward without spending.
Right.
On the things that it needs. Nothing is free.
Well, and there's some real value to what it is we're looking to expend this.
I think we've gone a long way, Mr. Chairman, to try to demonstrate to the residents and taxpayers of this town that when we do a job, we will do it right. That we won't skimp around the edges and kick the can down the road to another tax bill ten years from now, and then you have all these things falling apart, now is time. Or you get a lawsuit because of a broken sidewalk and somebody, you know, sells with the town for a really large amount of money because they got hurt. You can't fix everything all at once. I agree with the logic. I agree with the logic of doing sidewalks in the road, which makes a ton of sense. This is a huge project, by the way. I don't want anybody to lose sight of the fact. This is a massive project. Depot Street is busy. You're gonna have the thing dug up. You're gonna be resetting sidewalks. We're resetting the entire dry stack stone culvert a little bit further down the road with the Chapter 90 funds, and establishing storm work flows around the abutment in the, that basically that color. So this is a really big deal. This is, I think, a huge change for the town. You know, we're not just digging up a sandy road and running pipe down it and hitting it real hard with pavement. There's, there's a lot of work here. The people will notice, for sure.
How long do we expect it to be?
I really don't know. You try to do it in one construction season, but you might very well be busy from March to November.
If North Street taught us anything, there's a lot of surprises in these roads.
It'll go into a second year, because we'll want settling for the trenches. So we would lay the pipe, temporary patch for the winter, and then do the, a full re-plant the next spring.
How old's the pipes in the road?
19, 20?
They're 100 years old. They're probably better, made better then than they are now. So I have more faith in the 100-year-old cast iron than I would 40 or 50-year-old. But it's, it's just that, running the service at Town Hall's gonna require some excavation around Town Hall.
The reality of the project-
This did include running the pipes to the building at the Town Hall, both domestic and fire line.
One of the, just last, I don't know, maybe Ross, when we had looked at this, the, the goal was to get the water up here so we can, you know, look, look north, yeah, so. So it's a bonus all around.
Oh, yeah.
Money comes, money goes.
Well, you also get another road done, too. You'll have the-
Where does that fit in this?
So this is one of those things, when you do a project, do it right. So, Depot Street up to Town Hall, I'm not so sure going up the hill, I don't think it's in very great shape. But, up to this point in the roadway, it's a really great road. It's in perfectly good shape. But, the apartments are talking to each other, so if we need to tear it up for water, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna mess that all up. Like, you would have a trench patch up this, middle of this road. To just fix the whole thing, curb to curb, is the most effective way to do this. As we go through every single project in town, we talk to Mr. Sullivan and everyone else about where the utilities are, and whether they're due to be replaced, so that we don't make the mistake, this is very frustrating if you live in the city of Providence or any other place like that, where they come in, they do a big road project, and a couple of years later, they just rip the thing to shreds, waste all our taxpayer funds to make a pipe repair that they knew about at the time they did the paving. That's what people get upset about, I think, is that it looks like waste to them, looks like people aren't communicating and being very casual about the way they spend. We're gonna try to do the entire road project correctly, so that you won't have this conversation again, frankly, in any of our lifetimes. Except for Sullivan, because he's gonna live forever. Just trying to see if he's still there.
And he is.
All the preservatives from the coke.
Still at PFAS, right?
At Coca-Cola.
Coca-Cola.
I didn't, I didn't mean to move forward on Article 4 quickly, but I think we, we have at this point covered all that's needed in order to finish off this warrant. Eminent domain, Article 5, we talked about.
Yep, to 11.
Six.
Oh, six?
Yes. Similar, though. Article 6 and 5, land, same thing.
Second parcel.
So sometimes it's better to support the goals as a formality, and the eminent domain is the exercise of a legal authority. The authorization to purchase is the exercise of another of Town Meeting's legal authorities. Just keeping it separate and clean for people, rather than wrapping it up altogether.
Good. So that gets us to Article 11.
Okay, Article 11 and Article 12, we can do together, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. They look very similar. If you read the words carefully, they are different aspects of the same issue. So right now, if a firefighter or a police officer is injured in the line of duty, two things happen. One, they have leave without loss of pay. And secondly, their medical expenses related to that injury are covered by the town. Now that we have hired people who are not firefighters, and who are EMTs only, in order for them to enjoy the same coverage, Town Meeting has to accept the local options under Chapter 41, 111m and n. And that is the purpose of these two articles. M is without loss of, leave without loss of pay. N is indemnification coverage, reasonable hospital, medical, and related expenses incurred as a result of an injury sustained while acting in the performance of and within the scope of their duty without fault of their own. That's a loaded phrase. People familiar with the system know what all of that means. You're on the job, you're acting within the scope of your duty, and you do not contribute to the reason why the injury occurred. Any questions about that one?
And we spread those two because of the recent hire?
We have, we have two now, that are full-time EMTs. That are only EMTs and will not be seeking certifications for that. May or may not be, but at the moment, they are not.
They are not. Okay.
So this, just to back up for one second, we took this step in order to keep the ambulance on the road 24/7 at the ALS level of service. It is becoming just about a possibility to find firefighters, whoever firefighter 1 and 2, who are also paramedics, and able to contribute to the ALS level of service. Just, we're not able to find those folks. There are licensed paramedics who are willing to work for a fire, fire, fire ambulance department, if they don't have to be firefighters.
That's interesting. So you may find that the goal had always been to have dual professionals in the body of one firefighter slash EMT, but we're at a point now where it might be an either-or?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Per committee handbook, we need to take a vote if we want to continue past the two-hour point.
All right, I would make a motion to continue our meeting in the townspeople's business. Made by, did I make it?
You made it.
All right. Seconded by Pal Fitzpatrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll keep going.
Don't look at Frankenstein.
Well, you might as well set, set the stage. Because other committees are running excessive hours. We might as well get everybody in the habit of doing it.
No, and I think it's important, actually-
That was the whole reason for us to rip that thing out of the cobwebs and review it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the commcom had a nice, now, four-hour meeting.
All right, so we're on Article 14.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good catch, Mr.
We wonder why we're here. Go ahead, Matt.
Watching the charge dissipate from the battery in my car. Article 14, this came in today as well. Some fast work from Lisa and Gene. But, for those who've been paying attention to building facilities and finance, you know that I have expressed some frustration that the engineering and design work on the fire station came in way over what we anticipated when we did the opera allocations. I just wanna remind folks, because it's been quite a while, the fire station was struck by lightning. 20 years ago, 3 years ago, a long time ago. But when the building was struck by lightning, we learned a number of things about its electrical system, and how frail it is, and how it's just undersized. We don't have the electrical capacity in the building to support the 24/7 operation that we run out of there. Some of that is just, change that occurred that the designers back in 2000 wouldn't have thought of, because all this stuff wasn't plugged in and charged the way it is now. It was a call station, not a full-time station. So when we did the investigation into what this building needed, we arrived at a fairly good list of things that needed to happen. The building needs a full building generator. The generator has to be properly wired into the electrical system of the building. The electrical system of the building needs to be properly grounded. All of these things that went into the problems we got when we got hit by lightning. We went out, we signed a contract with the electrical engineer who did the work here at Town Hall. In my opinion, a fantastic job. He caught all the details. His specs were followed. We hired, you know, he participated in the procurement process. He had the bona fides for the winning contractor, were signed, sealed, they're delivered. They delivered on time, under budget, what has to be a very good project. It was minimally disruptive, and the thing works like a charm. Not that we don't test the boundaries of it, but we have a generator big enough to power this entire building, all of its operations, including this apartment, not just a small fraction. We hired them to do the electrical work at the fire station, and then a parallel storyline started to march closer to that one, which is that the air quality in the building is not good. And a lot of it has to do with the way we manage pressure. So the building is under negative pressure, so there is no way for contaminants to be pushed out of the building into the outside air, not replacing air inside the building and keeping things safe. HVAC is a big user of electricity. It only made sense that if we were going to improve the working environment for firefighters who statistically have very high incidence rates of lung cancer and heart disease due to their profession and the exposures they get. In order to effectively put in an HVAC system that does the job, it should go in hand-in-hand with the electrical work so that the proper receptacles and circuits are wired to the right places. So we married the two projects together. It was a bit of a moving target for the engineer, but it was the same firm, because they work in the HVAC area. Long story short, last week, they, about a week ago, 70 business days ago, they came in with a very high estimate of a loan. So they were ready to go to bid, and we were working on some details with the architectural firm that's assisting, and one of the engineers said, "Oh yeah, by the way, this is a million dollars." Which is not even close to what we had set aside, we had set aside just a little, about over $300,000. So the task that they were given was to come back to us with a project we could actually afford, knowing full well that we'd have to ask Town Meeting for some money, but it wouldn't be anywhere near all of the $1 million bucks. So, they gave us a very detailed letter today, a Friday afternoon. They went through all of the aspects of the project, including the soft costs, added them all up, and came to a final project cost of $540,000, of which there's ARPA money, $306,610, leaving a balance of $233,309. I'm recommending to you that we go forward with this. I'm somewhat afraid of where prices are gonna go on some of these components, and whether or not we're gonna be able to get them, and whether the engineering will stale with some of the code changes that are more or less constant happening. So, this is ready to go out to bid. If Town Meeting approves this money, we will be out to bid the very next day. Okay?
What explains the difference, this tremendous gap between the two numbers?
So we struck, it had been my hope to dispense fuel from, so basically, keep the, it's a diesel generator, keep the diesel fresh in that tank by fueling the fire equipment, the diesel fire equipment, from that tank. So we'd get larger deliveries, right? Which, I can save the town a lot of money if I can get bigger deliveries. And then it would be right there. Your fuel source would be right there, so you're not running all over the place. You could be right there in a storm, you're just pulling up. It made a lot of sense, but it's just too expensive. It's $190,000. This building, we anticipate, within the next five years, we need to build a small addition. Once you build that addition, you will trigger the sprinkler requirement for this building. Now, there was some foresight. When this building was built, a sprinkler line, a dedicated fire service line from Town Water, was run into the building and stopped there. So we're not, we're not paying for that now. We're just talking about putting the risers in, sprinkler heads, and it's just, all connects with the alarm and everything else. That will be in the bid documents as an add alternate, but it's not factored into the-
The million.
It is factored into the project cost, but it's an add alternate. So if we, if the generator and HVAC comes in high, we simply won't do the sprinklers, about 70 grand.
So the $500 and something included it, but we'll throw it out if we need to make savings.
That million was, by the way, an off-the-cup shoot from a comment by the young engineer. You know, it was more like 810, it was still too much. So we're taking a couple hundred thousand away from that, we're at 54.
Go ahead, Gene.
As Matt alluded, this, this article came in very late. I think I looked at that number again after. That balance of 306,610, maybe not including one of the invoices that was paid from Lisa's report to my report. So I wanna just make sure that, I, make sure the board's okay if these numbers adjust a little bit. And I wanna also make sure there's nothing pending on, on any outstanding contract. The only thing I'll add is there is a residual on ARPA under the phone, I know this is not on your agenda tonight, so you can't take a vote, on the phone project of $6,974, and on the professional services, on the ARPA consultant of $3,155,80.
That might cover a lot of that.
I'm wondering if, it is on your November 12th agenda.
ARPA discussion.
The ARPA discussion. So if, maybe we remove the, the language of the, the dollar amount of 306,10, 306,610, and just put ARPA funding, if at a later time you can-
Allocate.
-reallocate those to make up any differences.
Does this, by chance, get the fire out of their little cubicles and back in the building until?
Correct.
No, so?
No, it's definitely a major goal to get. People don't have to sleep outside anymore, they come back into the building.
That, and that alone is worth every penny.
It's a small offset there in the operational budget, but it's real money.
And that solution will get them out of the trailers, but it's a temporary solution.
Yeah.
That addition will be needed.
And when the addition comes, those trailers may come back.
No.
No? They'll, all right.
No, they'll be gone.
All right. Delving into areas that I know nothing about. Delving into areas that I know nothing about.
Be happy that you do.
Yeah.
Something says good to know it's the end.
Yeah. Like, hey, that's great. No, I think that's perfect. So, Gene, you're saying this number might actually be a little less?
I need to revisit the free cash and the ARPA funding piece, but we can't put an ARPA number there until you vote it, so I'll work with Matt on the wording on that. I also want to make sure there's no contract, if there's a balance residual on this contract too.
Okay.
We have spent $34,245 out of the ARPA funding. You originally approved 339,500 for the, by the Department, HVAC.
Is there any interest earned on the ARPA?
The interest earned belongs to the general fund. They changed, they changed the law, yeah. The first year was actually part of...
Don't, don't, everybody complain. We've been killing it. That holding onto the ARPA money was actually a really good idea.
Versus all the communities that...
Oh, you're getting five, five and a quarter?
Five and a half, five and a quarter. I'm all over other people's money.
Probably three something.
Something, versus other communities that run on ARPA money.
Well, there were twelve months of, I don't know what they, what they were paying. At the very height of it, it was more than three.
Ready for 10? Ready for 10? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Please do.
Make a motion to close the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mike, seconded by Hal. This is the motion to close the warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that was unanimous.
Make a motion to approve and sign a special town meeting warrant.
Second.
So the motion's been made by Mike, seconded by Hal. By one question there is, do we have to acknowledge the edits that may be coming, or we built enough consensus to sign this thing? All right.
I think it was catch-all comment. Pending the edits discussed here this evening.
As amended.
I accept Mike's amendment. Do you?
Second.
Hal seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And when is this? We're looking at November 18, late this year, right?
Yes, we have the town election and Veterans Day. That's what pushed us to the third Monday in November.
Yeah. That's great.
Moderator will be here on the 11th, 12th.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, moderator. Thank you, Gene.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thanks, Gene.
All right, moving on. I think we burned through some of my thoughts on possible increase in...
Well, I'm just wondering if you're going to increase my budget. That's what I'm waiting for this discussion.
Well, I had hoped to have a discussion. So I did put the number, where are we, 13, capital improvement discussion, on the agenda with the hopes of spurring a little discussion. It is late, but I think colleagues, I will probably, over the next couple of months or so, begin interjecting agenda items to help us shape the next fiscal year's budget. The CPA, notwithstanding, excuse me, the capital improvement, notwithstanding, is a number of, I think, town department people that we would like to just reconnect with.
Just keep in mind that the capital improvement committee is a standalone committee that doesn't go through here, so you can make suggestions and whatnot, but it still falls under there. Jurisdiction.
And good work you do. I do think, however, if there were money to be had, and if this board were to look at it and say that, you know, we want to eat into that list a little bit, that we could make a recommendation.
You can make a recommendation, but there's no guarantees to it.
No, I understand.
What's the capital improvement budget?
Have no idea.
It varies.
After tonight's discussion, by a dollar ninety-eight.
People may ask on the street.
They can ask on the street, but it's not known, right? So after you, they have to go through all these funds that are in front of us now, and then we get to the end, we try to figure out what's left. And typically, we leave around 750. Last year, we were a little higher than that. Well, we want to be careful if we don't have these spikes and valleys in the free cash residual amount, because then that's bonding rating will go out the window.
Yeah, we're spending, to what Gene highlighted, a little bond rating.
It's kind of a balancing act. Fortunate enough to have Gene and Matt work very closely with the capital committee to get us to where we need to be. With that being said, it's, you put that on there, and you touched on potentially adding to different things. Just over the next couple of years, the requests are somewhere around $9.5 million. And we don't spend that. We spend on an average of 1.2 each year. So we're at about 30% of what we need already, and if you add anything to anything, you're going to take away from somebody else, is what the problem is, so. Not trying to be difficult with the capital process, but it's a very difficult process to go through, because you're sitting there, everybody needs it, and you know they need it. So we just went through with the sidewalks, right? So it's not that we want to foolishly just throw 350,000 to the wind, but you have to do the job the correct way, otherwise you're just setting yourself up for failure. So with that, I'm going to leave the rest of it alone.
And then CPA discussion, you know, people may have noticed there's some signs going up, and I want to be delicate here, because I love activism. I had watched a couple of committee meetings, and I don't know if we received an official letter from open space asking for support. I know when they were here, they did ask for individual support, but I wanted to kind of gauge this committee's interest in supporting the CPA as a body. So with that, I would entertain a motion if someone was inclined to do so. Matt, this CPA, Chris isn't here, per se, but there's an administrative impact that those that pay attention to the machinations of Town Hall should be aware of in respect to what would happen if this were to pass?
Yeah, so Chris is away. The principal assessor is not available to you. He's going to be available, he'll be back in town when the finance committee meets to discuss the matter. If you listened to the FinCon meeting the other night, you know what the issue is. It's kind of odd, right? This is not coming through the town meeting process, which is one path the CPA can take. This has been put on the ballot by petitioners. It is on your general election ballot. It is question number six. So that warrant of election that you guys approved tonight, if you page through it, question six is the local question for the adoption of a community reservation. So there will be no discussion of this at the November Town Meeting. That is not where the decision's being made. It is being made at the ballot box by individual voters. I've sat around as complicated a drafting, whether it's legislation or commercial contracts, you know, restaurant leases get pretty... I've never read anything as dense as the CPA. It is a really difficult statute to understand. And then when you administer it, as a principal assessor, there are going to be steps that you need to take, because there's a $100,000 exemption for every, for every property. And once it's, the money is gathered, and there's the accounting for how it's raised and how it's managed. So there is an administrative piece of this. Again, a well-informed voter should pay attention to all of those and make up their own minds as to whether they think it's a good idea or not, that it's not our purview. Our purview is simply to say that this is not simply some dollar amount that'll be added to your tax bill and you pay. There's math and administration that goes into it, and it becomes part of an overall conversation, if you think about it. If you seek an abatement or other procedures through the assessor's office, the existence of the CPA changes how that will be approached, so.
And you said he'll be there at the FinCon meeting? All right, so we would refer the taxpayers to maybe watch that meeting, to get a better understanding of the impact there. Matt, your report?
I'll be very brief, because the things I've been working on with my department heads resulted in this warrant that you went through, and these discussions will have an executive session. I'll turn the board's attention to two items. One is, we continue to be very successful as a town, winning grants. You will be, at the proper time, be asked to accept a grant. But the Community One Stop for Growth awarded the Town Devils $115,000 to complete its master plan project with the assistance of CMR PC. So a large part of the work will not fall on the shoulders of our Community Development Department and the staff too. Got to make that part of the topic. And the big news in my mind, is completely and totally unexpected Commonwealth of Massachusetts sent this correspondence to the effect that the state intends to pave South Street from State Drive to the end. Now, as you know, we already did part of South Street. We want to alleviate a drainage issue, but the entire rest of the roadway will be done. South Street is one of the busiest roads in town.
Did they say up to three, three and a quarter miles?
I don't know what they, I didn't see there was any limit. I really didn't.
Yeah.
I know the highway superintendent has sat through the training to participate in that program. And if there's room to move in the budget, because we've already done some of the work, we would ask them to support us with stormwater improvement along the side of the road that they pave. But for the taxpayer to understand, South Street's a long road. So the state saying they're going to paint, pave the thing, that saves a lot of money for the town.
But there's a limit to it, or not?
I don't know where that came from. I, that's not what I read. I read a letter that said they were going to pave South Street. So if I'm wrong, I'll figure it out. I don't think so. I think the mile marker that was identified in that letter is the mile marker at the So I distributed, this is my second point. StanTech is back to do a refresher on the pavement condition study that they did five years ago, six years ago, for the Town Devils. The original study was funded by the Governor Baker's Community Compact Best Practices Grant Program.
Actually, I think it was done in '20.
Was it '20?
I don't know.
Yeah, '20.
Yeah.
So the investigation was done in '19, but they gave a report in '20. So this color, colorful page in the front is the major roadways in Douglas with their recommendations for action. The second and third page of the handout covers the material that we are going to go over with StanTech on a staff meeting basis, so highway superintendent, myself, Mrs. Capati from StanTech will be meeting to review this. But town has improved. So we were, the average pavement condition was a rating of 54.3 for almost five years ago, and now it's a 58.2. And the backlog has shrunk by just about a million dollars. There's a good summary here of where the different categories of roadway condition in the town are categorized, and how much we're supposed to address into those individual Needless to say, though, we're marching along at what I would consider to be a furious pace, because if we, the state's on the hook for South Street, and the town is going to be defiled, if Lockton would, the state supports our project on North Street, we'd be paving, realigning, paving, and improving North Street. So those are three significant roadways in this town that we'll be doing in the next year, year and a half, in addition to those that we've already done, the state already did, including West Street, which was a non-trivial contribution. So what I don't have is the final draft of this overall study, because there will be in that study a rank ordering of your top 10 priorities. It looks like the vice chairman stole a copy from...
No, this is the 2020.
That's 2020.
Yes, this isn't, and I didn't steal nothing.
It'll be updated to reflect the work we've already done. One of the things I do point out is that the pavement study reflects only the condition of the pavement, and an engineer's judgment on maintaining that asset. Back in '20, I added more information to the...
Excuse me?
Because I felt like we needed to add traffic count data, as well as school bus routes, and other information to really understand which of these assets is utilized to the greatest degree, so that you benefit the maximum number of taxpayers when you allocate funds to roadway projects. So that's one of the things that we discussed with the staff of ours, taking that information and pulling it in. Because I think, you know, it's one thing to drive down a small rural road and say this really needs help, but go down fairly busy roads, not the busiest in town, but fairly busy. Southeast Main is the road that comes to my mind, which has significant problems and pavement cracking, lines of sight, and it carries quite a few school buses and other traffic. And so when you're rank ordering your priorities, you make sure you fix the asset that will benefit the most people as best you can. So that's it for my report.
Having said that, there's some roads that are just atrocious in the neighborhoods.
They're just really hard.
But that's a balancing act that the pros put together. Good.
Have we ever used betterment fees on streets or just water and sewer improvements?
We don't use betterment for anything right now.
How about the water and sewer? That we were going to, no? So it's just the rate payers? It's the rate payer, yeah, okay.
That takes another proactive step?
Yeah.
To assess those betterments? But very reluctant to go on that path.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Given the hour, are we going into executive session?
Yes, it can be quick, but I do need to cover all of these topics.
All right. Is there a motion?
You're up on deck there.
All right. I will make a motion to enter executive session. Potential litigation, MSHG granting contract closeout costs for Northeast Main Street, Gilbo Street, and interest in real property, Chapter 61 rights, Orange Street and Rideout Road.
That's AAA, moving up.
You just messed up his whole thing.
To reconvene into open session for the sole purpose of adjournment. Motion's been made by Ross.
But he's still holding off.
Seconded by Les.
You're making it a little bit difficult.
Roll call vote? Smith, aye.
Stevens, aye.
That's Patrick, aye.
Bone and I, let's...